I'm in all of the states. I was just, I was just in Ranford last week. Now call that county school board's orders and all say in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest status of character and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on agenda, what I would like to do is allow Ms. Handy to join the meeting via electronic. I have a motion to do so.
All right, I motion to allow Ms. Handy to join the meeting. Second.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, public comments, first item on the agenda.
Any call order?
We got that, oh, roll call, oh, I'm sorry, we got to do roll call. We have roll call.
Present.
Mr. Hale.
Present.
Bob Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Handy.
Chair.
Present. She's here.
Mr. Bull.
Present.
The town's here, Bob Holden.
Here.
Mr. White.
Present.
Ah.
Here. Alright, okay, next item is roll call, and we have four individuals that have signed up. Mr. John Robinson. Or could I have to read the rules of our public comment?
Alright, identify yourself by name and address. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Individuals may not preserve or overuse transfer their time to another speaker. Specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Specify the nature of your remarks. Speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment shall not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation twenty-four hours in advance for review by staff or approve us. All questions shall be directed to the chairman, who will, at his discretion, solicit this response from the appropriate staff member.
Alright, okay, first person, Mr. John Robinson.
My name is John Robinson, I live at two three five seven zero Warburg Circle, Cambridge. Four years ago, in the school board meetings down at Dayton, I brought to you guys attention about the disciplinary problems we have on these school buses, and it's getting worse. We have kids that I know have five referrals and all gotten five days put off on shift referral. Now, we have bus drivers now, the docs are taking off because the blood pressure's out of control because the kids are so disrespectful, they can't take it. We need ten bus drivers right now to make things kind of smooth back. Say something to some of the parents about the kids, well, I know somebody on the school board, well, I do too, but that shouldn't make a difference. We have, we all have a job to do, we should do our jobs according to what the rules say that we should do. I, you know. I love my job, I train bus drivers, and I'm being made to look stupid because I tell these bus drivers that the train is, when you have a problem, do, go through the process that takes care of these problems, and the problems are not getting taken care of. Bus drivers are quick, they get tired, right now we don't have enough bus drivers to do summer school. Why? Because they're fed up with the nonsense. What are we gonna do? We gonna keep going this way or what? And I don't think about not even coming back this year. I really, I really, and I, I give a hundred, ten, twenty percent to this, to this job, I love it. I thank God that he has given me a knowledge and a vision to help control the kids. I don't have this problem on my bus because I don't allow it. Bus drivers come to me with tears and eyes, probably, can you come and talk to my kids? That's not my job, but I do it because I love kids, and I try to help keep the kids in school. He'll tell you, he knows. And if this keeps going the way it's going, the violence is gonna escalate, we're gonna have serious problems on our hands, then everybody's gonna holler back, oh, Lord, I'm so sorry. It's too late to be sorry after the problem happens. We need to do something to fight it now before it escalates out of control. And if we don't, then shame on everybody in this room. I, I, I don't know what more I could say. You know, I said just four years ago that it would get to this point, and here we are at this point. I had that vision, and we are here. We're gonna mess around, that, the teachers talking about the stress within the classroom. I'm gonna tell you something, if you know what stress is, get off school bus.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you, just wanna thank Mr. Robinson too, thank you for bringing that up, really important part. I'm a school teacher, my name is Cara O'Brien, Cara Ciara O'Brien, and I'm the elementary art teacher, and you wanna see stress come into the art room, yet I'd like to reserve that for my second three minutes, please, because my first three minutes are, and yes, this is my last meeting, no, this is my last meeting, I'm not coming back next year either, because the stress is through the roof, and my first, I've come here for the follow-up on how is the safe drinking water and the safe air to breathe for the students and staff here at Akamak County Public Schools. I was here in April, I brought data, I had a folder, I have still all that information to be shared with the public because it's public information, and for the past ten years there has been consistent data of proof of lead in the water at Akamak Elementary and at the middle schools and at the high schools. That is fifteen years of the students and the staff's health, I mean, the staff is more than fifteen, we got staff that are there for decades, and blessed be to them, and the children though, it's like you cannot cook lead out. The EPA and the CDC say on their website, there is no safe level of lead to be consumed, period, especially for the brain development of a child. Lead is a serious cognitive disruptor, and so is black mold, and that's why I mentioned the clean air degree, because there's black mold in the buildings, I mentioned it last time, and I'm so glad that within the same week, action was taken, and the grounds and buildings came in, and they cleaned the vents, but the corridor between here and there, that strip right there on top, and right by this wall, there is apparent black mold there, and it seems like nothing happened to that, and that was two months ago, and I know a lot about mold, it is highly toxic. Mold toxicity symptoms are brushed under the road for years, and it's cost a lot of money to get tested for it, and it's just, it's kind of out of our, probably out of the children's availability to get tested for these things, because it's expensive, it costs extra, it's extra testing, so needless to say, it's worth it, and I hope they do, but why do we have to go that far when there is affordable options? A Brio filter, the right model, our school has a Brio filter, and all we need is the right model, we do not have the model that filters the lead or copper, and so does the kitchen, the kitchen needs that, Nandua has thirty BPP, the EPA does have a minimum fifteen BPP, even though they say zero should be accepted, and the high school has thirty, yet I also saw on the tab that the high school has three hundred BPP at one of the tests that gets cited. This is a serious problem, it's been for years, I, so I hear, I've only been two years, but I'm here to try and be the voice for the fact that water is life, and water matters, and everybody deserves to drink healthy water and to be able to breathe healthy air. I've had a lot of anxiety in this classroom with no windows to get fresh air because I'm in the ventilation system of the black mold, the room that's right next to my building, I mean, it's right next to my room, you know, the art room, same design as here. It's not fair, nobody deserves to live under that, cortisol pumping through my system every single day, because I have five hundred plus students a week that I service, that's like, what I would love to transition into the next few minutes, with the elementary art teacher goes through. May I have another three minutes?
No, ma'am.
Rahar. There is no follow-up, you guys said you were gonna follow up to me though, why was there no follow-up? Can I ask you about that?
No, ma'am.
What? You can't tell me why you didn't follow up with me?
Your three minutes are up.
I'm, I'm not, why can't you tell me why you guys didn't follow up? Why there can't be action taken against Brio or the Brio? Nobody's emailing me back.
Your three minutes.
But, but nobody's emailing me back, what am I to do?
Would you have a seat?
I have to rest this summer, you want me to come back in July and speak about this again? This is unacceptable, this is unacceptable.
Next person, Susan Leighton.
My name is Susan Leighton, I work as an instructional assistant and a bus driver for Akamak County Schools. I'm here in my capacity as a bus driver. I think it's been about ten years since I've been driving, and I can attest to what John Robinson is saying about discipline issues are getting worse on the bus. Because of the lack of bus drivers, for the last two months I've driven two or three routes in the afternoon, and my route is fine, my kids are good, but other routes I've had will not listen to their substitute bus drivers. I've had students crawl over the seats, refuse to sit down, toss items all over the bus, swear, punch, hit, it's out of control, and I cannot watch the road, watch other drivers, turn around, and discipline children at the same time. It's a safety issue, and it's got to be addressed. I'm also here because of stress issue as a bus driver regarding a problem that started today with summer school. We got our list of summer school students today, mid-morning, and we're supposed to start driving summer school tomorrow. There is not enough time to set up routes adequately. Going into a route, you get your students, you look them up, find out where they live, you plan your route, you call, you drive your route, that takes more than sixteen hours in one day, that's two or three days at least, and you've given us no, no time to set up a route adequately. This is the second year in a row that this has happened with summer school, and again, it is why you don't have drivers, there's a lack of respect for bus drivers. We're trained professionals, we ought to be given the respect as a trained professional, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alicia Payne.
Good evening, my name is Alicia Payne, I live at one nine three three five Rochester Creek Road. I first wanna thank you for continuing to support our educators who are on the front line, our teachers doing the hardest work of all, day in and day out. The salary scale is heading in the right direction to support that belief, so again, I say thank you. I'm speaking tonight both as an assistant principal and as a member of our community. People serving as assistant principals are finding themselves in a conundrum. I'm speaking to you tonight to simply bring attention to the salaries of assistant principals and the hard decisions APs are faced with. People serving as assistant principals find themselves looking at a couple options. Option one, choosing a career in education in the classroom, enjoying summers although short-lived, with their children and families, and making a higher hourly rate of wage. Option two, choose to stay in a position of leadership, working many extra hours, less time to families for a lower hourly wage than that of a teacher. It is more of a financial benefit for a twenty-year-plus educator to serve in the classroom than it is to serve as an assistant principal. Simply put, the hourly wage while serving in the classroom is a higher hourly wage than that of an individual serving as an assistant principal. So I ask you, what would your advice be to an individual trying to make this choice? As we continue to build for the future, how can we ask any of our educators to continue their journey into administrative leadership if the financial benefits are non-existent? It costs an average of twenty thousand dollars to pursue a degree in educational leadership, and that in itself is more time away from families, higher financial obligations, and many more daily responsibilities in the field. We should be in the business of improving and making decisions that help us to grow, so I stand here tonight asking for your help. Help our community to continue to grow by prioritizing financial decisions so future building leaders find this decision to be a much easier choice. After being told for several years we know it's a problem or we're working on it, I wonder just how long before something changes. It's my understanding that there is currently a study occurring to determine more information about the compensation for building leaders, but I don't know enough about it to speak and tell children. Our students, teachers, and schools are best when we have great leadership. I ask you to be a part of building a strong leadership within this organization by demonstrating the value that these leaders hold in their positions. Education has never been about making the big bucks for any educator, but there's power in feeling valued, thank you.
Thank you, Rudolph. Alright, those of the four that have signed up, was it in one, came in late, was it not anyone signed up? Okay, I have, I would, normally we do not respond, I would like to share with you various committee that is looking at disciplinary actions that are taking place on buses, and there is gonna be a consistent set of rules and policies that can be followed, so that is in the process of being developed on this, during the summer, because it is in the fall. There is a study also on teachers, oh, assistant principal salaries, or salaries, period. That is something, you're right, we were conscious of it. And also, we did do a study, various review of the water situation in schools, and at this point it's been tested, we've not found any issues, but Mr. Bennett, Bob Bennett, has been working with that. Okay.
Dr. Holden has the, Eric has the question?
Yes.
Has the mold been tested in the gym?
I, I can tell you that Mr. Bennett has, you know, I can't, I'm not serious.
The house is scraped.
Okay, well, we're not, I, I will respond, I'll just hear, just tell you what's been done. Okay, item three point oh one, we have a guest who, right, it's Dr. Hall, we introduce the guest who has a special presentation for us.
Good evening, this evening we have with us Mr. Kenny Woods from RRMF.
Word.
Word, I'm sorry, from RRMF Architects, and he is here to present our Region Two Superintendent of the Year with a scholarship, who he will in turn present to this, the recipient of the scholarship.
Yes, so on lighter news. Yeah, my name is Kenny Ward, I'm Business Development Manager with RRM Architects, so on an annual basis, we recognize all of the regional superintendents of the year as well as the superintendent of the year. So I'm basically driving all around the state giving away money for, for a great job.
Just so you know too, you have online audience, so the microphone is also important.
Do you have to, I need to see.
You can take it there, you can take it there.
Pull it out to me.
Yeah.
Okay, good, so, again, we try, I travel all around the state giving away money, we love to recognize these great educators for all that they do for the students in their respective districts, and it's also a way for us to get back to the community because we believe that that's very, very important. So, without further ado, the Region Two Superintendent of the Year is none other, Warren C. Hollen. Dr. Hollen, you can just, you can just stand right there. Yeah, and just stay in the middle of us.
The recipient of the Warren C. Hollen Scholarship is a senior from Shingitake Combined School, Kylie Vope, and she will be attending Christopher Newport University in her fall.
I wanna thank Mr. Woods for coming from Fairfax, I was unable to go to Rota with this operation ahead, but I wanna thank you, it's kind of, you'd love to see him at the conference.
I appreciate that, Rod. Item four point oh one is approval of the minutes, you have an opportunity to receive the minutes from our last meeting. Any other questions? We're done, the vice admiral's consent, we're glad the minutes are approved. Item five point oh one is our vouchers, you have an opportunity to use vouchers, are there any questions? Alright, and then consent for the vouchers approved. Item six point oh one through six point one three, the second reading of the minutes, are there any questions on the item one you want to discuss?
I have a question about the, the committees, it looked like, I just lost my connection. Um, what about you, Jen?
Advisory committees?
Yes, which, it didn't list which ones, like, there's a, there was a big list to pick from, and you're supposed to, do we have all of those?
Well, what is the policy's really governing? When the policy's governing, what we do in the statements.
It's, okay, so maybe it's only for advisory committees?
Right.
The committee has said, please list which committees you have.
I see what you're talking about.
Thank you.
And those are the committees, the superintendents, the committees to have, or?
All of them?
No, it's just certain ones that you have to have, you have to have your parent advisory, teacher advisory, you have to have your, yeah, your superintendent's advisory committee, you're supposed to have your special ed, the CAF committee, you're supposed to have your health advisory committee, so yes, as you see that, those should be listed, and there's some of the committees that the superintendent has in Akamak County.
Okay, we can, we can pull it, and hold it until the big time. Alright, any other questions? Alright, could we get a motion to approve all five, six point oh one four, six point oh one, one oh one to thirteen exclusively, um, oh four.
Alright, I motion that we approve policy six point oh one through six point oh three and six point oh five through six point one three.
Second. Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, policy seven point oh one through seven, um, point one three are first meeting, we ask you to review those, contact the central office if you ask any questions you may have, and we'll prepare to vote on with our next committee. Item eight point oh one, delegate and alternate, this is for the ESDA meeting, woman who do the chair and vice chair, delegates and alternates. Questions? Do I have a motion to do that?
I motion that we have the delegate and alternate be the chair and vice chair.
Second. Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alright, signatory authority, in absence of the superintendent, normally we have, it's recommended we have Dr. Hall and our, it's only to sign official documents. Do I have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve Dr. Hall and Beth Onlin as signatures for if superintendent is not available. Second.
It's moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item eight point oh three, it's school board meeting scheduled for next year, and it starts with July eighteenth, November the fourteenth, and the twenty-first, we have back to back meetings because the first Monday, I mean, first Tuesday is the elections. Any questions, go ahead.
On the June fourth meeting for twenty twenty-four, is that gonna interfere with any graduation? Have we looked into that? As I did this year, usually I didn't look into this year with the.
Norm, Normandy.
Does anybody look into?
Normandy, that's not.
I looked at this year.
The elementary.
Oh.
Elementary.
Look on to your, issue your, put together a calendar, that might say that, and how this princess actually did not have like, or, or, or.
And then the June eighteenth meetings, that don't interfere with Juneteenth or anything like that, or, or those, like, things, but, would that be, is that a little weird?
So this is the two.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the schedule for next meeting?
I motion that we approve the meeting schedule for next year. Second.
It's moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alright, I have eight point oh four, student resource officers, it moves you.
Good evening, everybody.
Alright.
Make your entrance, Jake police, happy to announce that I secured funding through the state for a school resource officer for their high schools, or high school or elementary school, and every two years we have to, we have to get our MOU re-signed, so I'm hoping to get that accomplished tonight.
And this, this move has been reviewed and negotiated between our staff and, and the town of Shingitake, and we also have Mike Hall with here with us tonight too, so I think the result is very similar to our county, are there any questions?
I didn't have any questions, but I wanted to say thank you, I think it's really good having, yes, our officers in the Shingitake School, and the parents and kids I talked to are very favorable with our officers, he knows a big kid at elementary school, and helps out where he can, so thank you.
Very, very proud of you, thank you.
Alright, could I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Akamak County Public Schools and Shingitake Police Department. Is that second?
It's moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we need to get a copy.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. Next item, we will, uh, take the FY twenty-four budget.
Good evening.
Dave.
Good evening.
As I said at the last meeting, we're hoping that there will be some sort of a resolution which will occur after today, and we will, uh, get notification of additional funds. But meanwhile, we were already, uh, approving the teacher salary scale at an average increase starting at forty-eight thousand dollars minimum and an average increase, some lower, some higher, of seven and a quarter percent. So if, um, one of the senate or house versions passes, say, seven percent for SOQ instructional and non-instructional positions, then we'll be in compliance. So we're also recommending seven percent for all other staff, knowing as Dr. Holder mentioned that Clara and I have received seven responses, seven, five, seven? Seven responses to the compensation study. So we just try to go ahead once you pass this and send out contracts. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we're going to have to cut completely capital projects and facilities. Hopefully this is a temporary cut. I sent you, um, two point five is what we are down. The six sixteen due to the, uh, DOE Calcare for the grocery, grocery tax whole formers with basic aid. I'm still hopeful that either the senate or the house will address that. If you remember, they did address it for our current year. And they had not said what they were going to do for next year, so there's still hope that they'll address that six sixteen thousand dollar shortage. Okay, so what I did is exactly what I said last time. I looked back in our budget that we're in right now. And I added up all of the one-time expenditures. These are for specific projects that have either been completed or in the process of being completed by the end of the school year. That totaled a million twenty-six thousand. To give you some examples, French and Spanish textbook adoption, we don't need to do that again because we've done it. Um, the Voight phone system, Shingitig, the intercom bell clock system, Arcadia. All of these were in there as specific projects to be completed in this fiscal year. And we like to keep the money in there so that next year that money will be available to facilities, buildings and grounds for the next round of projects. This is what we're taking out plus the textbooks for a million twenty-six thousand. And you can find that on, in your, um, in your proposed budget, additional proposed for the year that we're in now. Then I also took some things out of the base budget because obviously a million twenty-six wasn't enough to hit the two point five million. So I took out what we had put in there for playgrounds and landscaping because this is the first year that we were trying to get that in our base budget so that would be in there for every year. I took that out. I took out five school buses that are in our base budget, and that is the amount. I took out the proposed elementary alt ed teacher and assistant, but I have spoken to Dr. Hall about that and, um, that would qualify for Medicaid funding, so we could switch that funding source to Medicaid and still keep that program.
So that will not be in?
Not be in our operating budget. Or it could be funded by Medicaid.
We will be keeping that.
Right, well, if, if Dr. Hall still, we're going to be coming up with a Medicaid proposal, which you all will approve, and that would be part of that.
I'm not favorite.
Okay.
Well, I, and neither's Dr. Hall, so that's why we looked for alternative funding for, for that, and that would qualify. We also have two hundred thousand dollars in addition to the specific expenditures in our capital projects base budget. That leaves four hundred eighty-nine thousand that we are still not in balance. Of that, I have, um, two hundred thousand dollars in K three, which I will have to shift salaries or something to the K three. And I also could put the three systems analyst for the ERP into Medicaid. That would bring a balanced budget. Like I said, we'll be coming back for this again because, um, everybody expects that there will be a different budget pass for us. But we must have a balanced budget in order before June thirtieth in order to be in compliance with code. So this is what, um, we're proposing.
Okay, all right, any questions?
I have a question. Just Beth, I got some phone calls from some teachers who I guess maybe got their contracts or got their whatever, and they understood that they, for the people in home, if you could please explain why not every teacher got their five percent. Some, there is, some, some teachers got less.
Yes.
Some teachers got more, but some people got more.
Right, well, there was basically a directive that the salary scale was to try to get a, a higher beginning balance. So we went from forty-four something to forty-eight. Clearly, we can't base everything on forty-eight without doing a lot of adjustment because we can't afford it. And the overall average was a seven and, and a seven point two seven percent, so we would be in compliance. So some of the raises went from four something, some of the raises were eight something percent. I actually took the number of teachers on each level so that we could calculate what we averaged at, which was the seven and a quarter percent. I have had one teacher reach out to me and question that he thought everybody got five percent. And I sent him a pretty extensive email a week ago Friday, and I haven't heard anything back. So I did attempt to explain it, but not hearing anything back on a specific question. But I even sent my spreadsheet that showed which, every level and the percentage in between of each step as well as, and I would have brought it, I don't know, as well as the overall increase when you go from a fourteen to a fifteen, that that's seven and a quarter percent or whatever, whatever it happened to be. So, um, Northampton does this, and this is one of the things that we had talked about before. They give the seven percent, say, on the midpoint, and then everybody gets that flat amount. That has the effect of raising starting salaries and the higher-end people not getting as much. We did not do that because that would have been pretty severe for the teachers with more experience. So, and we also have that longevity supplement in there for those that have been here a while. So it is not, everybody got seven and a quarter percent. It raised, it ranges from somewhere in the fours to somewhere even in the eights, but it's to try to get, and also looking at the V E G salary survey and where we rank at zero, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five and thirty, and trying to get those ranks more consistent because we were ranking a whole lot better at the twenty-five plus than what we were ranking than the others. So all that was taken into consideration with the spreadsheet, so it is not everybody gets five percent or everybody gets seven percent, but the average, that was the amount.
All right, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, budget?
I motion that we approve the updated, uh, revised budget.
Second? It's moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the financial report?
Okay, did, um, you received my, my federal programs report. Everything is progressing along. As you know, we have, um, somebody new doing grants and they're, they're coming along really well at it. That's our, uh, Sandy Shepherd. And do a high school, so I, I feel like she's, she's getting up, up to speed on all of this stuff and doing a great job. So all of those, and of course, the Title III and the migrant are, um, with Ms. Ivera and Kimberly Warmsby, and it's been like that. All are expected to do okay. Katie Farrell's working really hard on Title One. If you go down towards the bottom of the first page, you see that the I D E A Part B, ARC, low through. We are, um, they're, they're going to have that expire in September of this year. We were never able to hire the positions that Jennifer originally proposed, and I don't think she's in here. Uh, so she's reached out to the state department and spent, and she's trying to get alternate expenditures approved for that. It's been some back and forth. It hasn't happened yet, but, but she's working on that because that is in danger. We cannot spend that with the one employee we were able to find and hire when there was like four proposed. When you get down to, um, and the same thing with the ARC pre-K. The bottom page of that page perkins, we're waiting for a budget amendment to be passed, but that money has been spent and that will clear to zero. On the second page, Matthew, when he was here, had done some research and he actually had an email from the state that the Titans amendment applied to all of the CARES money that they had said was going to expire on September thirtieth of this year. We got a notification from the state about the bus driver incentive and the allocation to beans expiring this year. Nothing about there being, uh, an extension. We are definitely okay in the bus driver incentive, and I'm pretty sure we'll be fine on the CARES two, which will be a big relief. We're going to have to write some amendments. So we will be okay on that, but it does look like those two have the September date. Um, we're just now beginning the mentor teacher, educator, recruit retention and the R A R S grant, and those will be coming along as well. So as I think I mentioned to you before, we were able to hire an accountant, and he's given three priorities. First being bank recs with, working with a treasurer, the second being Gatsby ninety-six, which is more than anybody wants to know. It's accounting treatment for leases as in, and software. And it's a, it's a big, big project. And then the third being carryover, um, not carryover, I'm sorry, uh, CARES grants. So bank recs and Gatsby ninety-six were time sensitive, so we worked on that almost the whole time he's been here. And those are nearing completion, so he'll be hitting this full force within the next week or so. I also have one other thing. We were contacted by, uh, DeMuth Train, and if you can, quite a bit of work was DeMuth Train. And I'll just kind of read you a little bit of an email stream. This is from the DeMuth Train representative. There's a tax credit that is available for helping to make buildings more efficient. For-profit clients can claim the credit themselves, but public entities cannot, clearly because we don't file tax return. Uh, so in many cases, it just goes unclaimed. DeMuth has hired consultants to look into this to see if we might be able to claim some of these credits on retrofit projects we've done with certain public clients. So what they would have to do is they run an, an energy analysis to see if any of the projects in the schools would qualify. I do want to make clear that what is being asked, the office is hoping that some of these projects qualify for the tax credit and that the school system would be willing to transfer that tax credit to us if it does, since you all can't claim it anyways, being a non-taxable entity. So we had eight schools that have projects that might qualify, Akamak, Arcadia Middle, Shingitig High, Kayden Tank, Matonkin, Manua Middle, Punkettig and Tangier. So what they want to do is come out here and perform an energy analysis. It would not affect our children or our education or any of that. And then if it does qualify, we would have to sign a form for allocation based on the date placed in service. Uh, this would be anywhere from sixty cents to a dollar eighty cents per square foot is what the credit would be if the school, um, has a, uh, efficiency improvement. So the deduction can be allocated clearly to DeMuth because it's for engineering, architecture and construction entities that are responsible for the design components, components of government-owned, energy-efficient buildings. So they would like permission to do that. If any of them do make it, then we would sign a form uh, that's called a allocation statement, and there'd be an allocation letter. The only benefit to us is we would receive the energy information. So I wanted to bring this to this board. They've hired an, an outside CPA consulting firm and engineers to come do the analysis. We don't know if it would, I wouldn't let them do it until, you know, you all gave the go-ahead because there's no need for them to do that study if, if you weren't. It's a simple signing of a letter. And it's section one seventy-nine D, and if anybody wants to read the tax code.
And, uh, I guess you were saying there is no financial benefit, it's only, uh, dollars based.
I asked what, what's in it for us?
Right.
Yes, you know, we would. And, um, they're like, oh, but we can't promise you anything. This isn't, you know, I'm like, no, no, no. I'm not trying to say anything that's inappropriate here, but what, what's in it for us? And this was the CPA firm, and they're like, oh, you would get the information.
But it would be studied in the efficiency of our system.
We, and we, and I asked, will this involve my staff having to make copies of invoices for electricity and all this? No, it would just go in the school and analyze it.
These were for the new childrens that were involved?
Mostly childrens, yeah. We did some near family.
And has Mr. Bennett been involved in this hall?
He was, yeah, he, the, it originally came to him, and he involved me in it, and we had a conference call. But the original letter that I was reading went to him and to Paul Block. And, you know, he doesn't have any problem with it because they're just looking in the schools. So there, there's no problem for facilities with this, but I did not feel it was something we should do without.
Sounds though the information would be beneficial to us of the system, at least with help and support, and then be able to evaluate our systems like of what was a concern expressed tonight.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the, this, uh, response that, uh, to, to, to the, to the.
Second?
All right, it's moved to second, to accept the recommendation to allow, um, them to do the study. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? One abstention.
I'm abstaining as well.
Two abstentions. Item eight one oh seven, uh, grading policy.
Good evening. So the last time I came up here was for the course offering guide, and I know it was brought up about the grading policy as far as looking at the scale a little bit differently, um, as far as possibly doing it by total. So I did some research, met some people, um, and then also in the process, just reviewing the grading policy in general. Because some of the things in the grading policy actually was during COVID, uh, some things that we adopted to get through COVID that we had actually never gone back and reviewed again. So I gave y'all the policy for y'all that had the option to look at it, and I was able to answer a few questions for some people. Um, but just to kind of skim over a couple of things. Right off the bat, as you can see, the proposed grading scale itself, moving it from just a regular ten-point scale to have a more discrepancy with adding pluses and minuses to the letters and also breaking the GPAs down. When I looked at other school divisions, that is basically how their scale was, except for the A. The A, I noticed at many schools that didn't do the regular just flat out ten-point scale, they actually did just A and A minus, no plus. They didn't start the plus until they got to the B. When I talked to some parents, I talked to some teachers, they kind of, they didn't bother one way or the other, so that was something I didn't know if you all would want to either keep it like I have it into the proposal or go ahead and adding the A plus to it so that we have it all the way through a plus and a minus with all of them. Another thing I noticed too with some of the school divisions when they did the A, they actually did an A at the ninety-three to a hundred. There really wasn't a lot of discrepancy when she got to the A. It was more when she got to the B. So several parents, teachers said, should we raise that up a little bit to the ninety-five versus the ninety-three? Um, but again, if we were to do an A plus, then we could look at ninety-seven to a hundred, and A ninety-four to ninety-six, and an A minus ninety to ninety-three and kind of breaking it about three points, three and a half points between each one, um, the same as the B, C and D. Or we can leave it as it is. I know initially the first question was total points. I could not find one school division that did total points. The other thing with the total points is we, the division as well as many others do weighted scale. So if a student takes an honor class or a dual enrollment class, we weighted higher total points, we'll eliminate that altogether. So then we would have a lot of students taking general A classes, and we could be number one just as quick as a student that takes dual enrollment classes. So, and that was kind of what I noticed with the other school divisions too when they broke it down, because again, they did the honor classes, they did the dual enrollment A classes on a higher weighted scale as well. So that was one, I know that was the initial, what was brought up, the course offering to bring as well as a couple of other changes I was going to go through. Did you want to discuss this? We keep wondering.
Any questions?
I, I did, I, I thought that the, um, the A minus, A plus was a better way of doing it other than, rather than just an A.
With a plus as well with the A?
Well, um, well, if you don't find another division with that A plus, you think that's okay, but I know before we didn't even differentiate the B and the B plus, so.
Right. The only, I couldn't really find any high schools with the A plus. I found a couple. I actually went and looked at college level too, so I found a little bit more of the college level with the A plus, um, but for secondary.
Do you have a quick response on pro and con, a plus and not plus?
No, the biggest thing was a lot of the teachers and parents were very happy to see that we're going to separate this out a little bit. There's a big difference in having a ninety and a ninety-seven. I mean, it's a huge difference. So they feel like the kids are actually getting the GPA they really truly aren't.
But as far as like with the A, do you see any, any need to? But as far as like with the A, do you see any, any need to have the A plus, or any need not to have?
If we want to just have a little bit more consistency with the B, C, and D, to have that plus, we could do that. And on to the GPA part, if we went with the A plus, 97 to 100, that would be 4.0. An A 94 to 96, that would be 3.7, and the A minus 90, 93 would be a 3.5. So you're still above.
Any other comments?
I was just gonna say, so Jesse actually asked the question that I wanted to ask, but still I just wanted to say briefly that the pluses and minuses is, it's, it's just, it's a concern of mine from the student standpoint. I just think about all the stress and all the pressure that our students are already under, and I just want to state it, that I think we're really splitting hairs, especially with A, even thinking about an A plus. I just think it's already a lot of pressure.
So you would rather have it just be A, B, C, D, no minus or plus?
Yeah, I, the question around the pros and the cons, it's the cons for me.
I, I do see though the student that, you know, has B pluses, and they, they're as, you know, as higher, yet the B plus isn't recognized. I thought just going with a straight number, there's your number and that's it, but they don't do that anywhere, as you said.
I haven't run any school divisions with total points at all.
Could be the first.
Well, the other issue is our students are compared against other schools. If you do something crazy at Akamak High School, we're disadvantaging our students. So you need to say with the typical person being crazy, do something, how, how we act.
And sometimes the E two was, I was looking at how they did their scales with the pluses and minuses versus the 10-point. A lot of the 10-point A, B, C, no longer be valid or salutary. They do honors, like the Maga King Lada. There were a few divisions that had the pluses and minuses that have also done away the valid Victorian, but then a lot of them still have it. There was a couple of divisions, when I initially brought to the boards several years ago about, you know, whether we did use the valid Victorian, some of them have actually brought it back since COVID.
Divisions that took it away and brought it back?
Took it away, yeah. So it's kind of been a mix. It's not like more one way or the other, it really is a mix. I look at small school divisions, not just our code board, I look at small school divisions as well as big school divisions, as well as colleges, just kind of seeing, because like Mr. Bull said, ultimately, at the end of the road, colleges are comparing our kids against a kid in Fairfax or in Rockville. At the end of the day, they're on a single playing field, and they're looking at GPA on what our kids are doing.
Well, I, I know there's some schools where children are able to have a 7.5 GPA. I mean, that's not even possible at our division. So I mean, I think that's why they look more at class rate, because GPAs are all good to place.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. My question is, I mean, this is great for the academic kids and stuff like this, but it will, the lower kids, it will affect their overall grades and being able to participate in different things. I, I don't have any problem with this. I think it's good to kind of separate the kids that are academic kids, but I don't, will it, will it benefit the, the kids that are the C minus and below, or will it hurt them?
Well, I did have one coach actually say they thought that the, the plus would actually help an athlete when it comes to maybe being able to make that 2.0. Because you're giving a little bit more, kind of like, the, the, the one, and that's it. That would get a little bit of extra, something that might, if they were to use the waiver.
They would get us closer back to where our scale used to be.
Right.
If, if way back in the day, when you were 69 or below, you was kind of a failing grade if you, but again, it's gonna affect some of the lower kids somewhat on the lower end of the spectrum. But I don't have any problem if everybody's okay with going, because it will, it will separate the higher A kids. But I just, you know, hopefully it wouldn't, won't hurt the, some of the lower A kids.
I know there's multiple scales that could give you guys the options, and we still can, that's kind of why I wanted to have this discussion, although we're actually doing the voting, so.
Under a 5 point E, you say for elementary, if a student turns in the size of a patient that received a number grade lower than a 50, is that the same for the middle and high school, that we're still doing that?
I, not that far, but yes, I did actually want to.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good, you're good.
I'll achieve it.
Let me move on.
Another question?
I just got a quick question. If how do you justify 1.7 dual enrollment if you already got an L, I mean the D minus? With the dual enrollment, would you even put them in a dual enrollment course?
That would actually apply more to the AP class, because of course, each for community college are contracted with them, and it's their policy, if a student has the D, they're automatically dropped from the course. So it would be more for the AP course.
So y'all will allow somebody with current act score to take an advanced placement course?
Well, if they're enrolled in their AP class, that's what their grade would be at the end of the AP class, that's what their GPA would be. If they, that's what they got. Not that they would go into a class without, in order to go into it, they would actually have to meet the criteria of the 3.0 overall GPA were to go into it. But we have had some juniors and seniors who maybe not have been as ready as they thought for an AP and dual enrollment class and end up with a D. So if they do end up with a D, that would be what the grade and GPA would look like. The same as when we were on the 10-point scale, they would get the one, which would drop them dramatically as far as taking any future AP or dual enrollment classes the following semester or following year. And we try to stay ahead of them from the beginning, the counselors do with our students with remediation, or even if it's right off the bat, the first five, they add, that some of the kids come right to us and say, this is not what we're looking for. That's not what they're ready for either.
Any other questions? All right. Where do you?
So the other one to address, Mr. Taylor's for 5E. We added in the verbiage for elementary, so before COVID, elementary always had the policy of no grade less than a 50, whereas during COVID, we eliminated the verbiage for elementary, so that it was for elementary, middle, and high, because COVID was new to all of us, virtual learning was new to all of us, and it was just all new, and kind of find out the students, teachers. But we wanted to go back to the original policy of this is for elementary only, so secondary, middle, and high will go back to the regular 0 to 100 grading scale. But also to clarify for elementary, and we have had this conversation both this year, and we're gonna have a conversation with elementary, the things we did for secondary, is that it does not mean a student puts their name on the paper and they get a 50. They actually have to do the work and attempt to do the work and show that they're trying, not just put a grade on it. And we did have that conversation with some parents this year, they thought because their child put their name on a paper, they automatically got a 50. That's not how it works. You actually have to show effort with that. Also, we struck out number six about the learning packets, because again, that was during COVID, when we were virtual, half virtual, trying to accommodate across the board, we don't have the learning packets anymore. When you get to the exam exemption, we struck out seniors that have an A average of the course. The reason we did that is because that means a senior has an A average regardless of attendance. As we know, the attendance indicator, that should not be, and we've had seniors with an A that have had 10, 20-day naps and still have the A in class. So with that, that's when we went ahead and wanted to make sure we added a reference to our attendance policy, and if the attendance policy make it for everyone, that they have to have a B or better, two or less days to be exempt. Because with the SOLs, they're only allowed to be exempt if they pass biology, English reading, and everything. So that way, seniors, juniors, even our middle school, to see attendance incentives, hopefully they'll come to school and keep that B or better average. Number eight, we've been on the block scheduling for middle and high school. Like the middle school said, they want to be consistent with the high school, doing the grading as far as the 40, 40, 20, so 20% for exams across the board, as well as we struck out 10, because the seventh and eighth grade, but versus the unit test, which means regardless if a sixth-grade student passes the SOL or not, they still have to take the unit test. The middle school would like to see our sixth graders be exempt from the exam as well. If they pass an SOL, this is, they don't take the technical exam in sixth grade, they don't fall under the exemption policy unless it's under the attendance. So we said, across the board, 6 through 12 exams, because the exam is pretty well a unit test. But if our students are passing the SOL, which is a cumulative test, then our sixth grades will be exempt as well. Also, at 11, we added the verbiage add or in front of drop, so that way it's clear that students cannot just add into a class after the first five days of the semester. And then number 16, we struck that out for high school, middle school. Future expectation report at least two grades per category every four and one-half weeks. We kind of thought that was a little bit redundant to number 5E A. However, talking with some teachers and parents today, as well as a board member reached out to me with the same thing, is that for 5A, that they asked if we could change that to have a minimum of two grades per category per quarter semester. So you have, for each nine weeks, you have to have two quizzes, two tests, two homeworks, two classes minimum. But we don't want a teacher just to do all 18 grades and tests for all 18 grades and quiz, so they have to do at least two minimum each category, and then after that.
In a week, you said?
In a nine weeks. Because they have to have 18 grades per nine weeks, so we're only talking about eight of the 18, there has to be two out of the category, so the rest could be the other 10 from however they want to, you know, do their grades.
Okay. One other thing is, we received a letter earlier this week, concerning, from a parent concerning their child was passed along, and then found himself in the high school that they still couldn't do any, any, something they grade worth. This policy really does not promote that, so I'm also, we are not, we don't pass kids just to be passed.
No, so actually, I spoke to that parent today, and basically what she's saying is by us keeping the policy for secondary with the 50 or higher, no grade lower than a 50, when I looked at her child's grades, there were four assignments that her child was given a 50 versus the grade they earned. If their child had been given the grade they earned, they would have failed the class. And that parent actually chose that she wanted the child to have failed the class and not have gotten the 50, because she feels, felt like, you know, should be retained. So we discussed that today, and that student's gonna do summer school for remediation.
All right. Any other questions?
I like the, the emphasis on the attendance. That's good. I mean, we get squeezed, horned, we shouldn't pass that along. But about the 50 for the elementary, it does say if a student turns in an assignment, they should not receive a number grade lower than a 50. So maybe, it doesn't say anything about the quality of the assignment, so maybe you want to add language that says, attempts the assignment in earnest, or makes a good faith effort or something, that would eliminate them just from their name.
I agree. I think that's a good thing, that you, you worked on it, but you were behind, maybe you didn't know what you were supposed to do. Make an effort, make an effort, get this.
Yeah, we can add that verbiage.
Yeah. I agree.
Or even add, yeah, they have to complete at least 75% of the assignment in parentheses.
Yes.
That's the true.
Wrong, but they made the attempt.
Yes.
So you see that they have to complete it.
Does that, but then it just said they, they go on all through elementary school, get the 50s, and then they get to sixth grade and.
I can't say that's no more of a disadvantage than the students who get to opt out of SOLs, elementary, middle school, and then high school. You're told there is no such thing as an opt-out. You either pass it or you don't graduate high school. What's wrong? Just by waiting for that.
I think this looks good. That one moving in the right direction.
Could, could I have a motion to?
How much is the scale?
Where would we change?
Grading policy with the, the change, the big scale, maybe, and then just like.
Do we, you had options, or like?
I know, so option is keep it as is. Option two would be as you see it in the proposal. Option three would be to add the plus to the A, so A plus, A, A minus.
So I guess we can do a poll on those three.
Okay. I guess we should, so would you?
I, I would say, keep it as is after the discussion.
Keep it as is, okay.
Print.
Get the, the.
And it's presented here.
B.
B. There you go.
B. I'm good with what you have here.
I'm good. I'm good with what you have here as well.
I'll put a B since it's one of your options.
All right. All right, so could I have a motion that we accept, what was proposed, along with the changes that have been suggested? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the grading policy with the amendments.
Second?
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'll update our course offering guide, and hopefully the next meeting you'll have a hard copy of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have 6.01, second attendance report.
Yes. We're, every year, it's a very wellness of the WILs. We've had a lot of, of learning loss with COVID. And anybody who knows me, I check these SOLs every day. And even when I got out of hospital, I'm calling them. I think this year, accreditation, it's all about accreditation. You don't forget most certain things, but we gotta be accredited. And I've got a good feeling about accreditation this coming year. I've talked to Dr. Hall, she's keeping me up with it. And I also would like to thank the principals, the staff, for the, all the graduation at the elementary, middle, and high. I've heard a lot of the good things, how it was set up. I want, my hat goes off to administration for setting all that up. That's all I have.
And then we're gonna add one other thing, since we won't have another meeting until July 18th. We did receive preliminary numbers on the Akamak primary facility. And after talking with each one of the, of the group, what we would do is I can recommend that we move forward with developing RFP to select an architect to move towards renovation of the Akamak Elementary School. It's falling within our budget, and building this is probably the best thing for us to do. So I will answer the questions that, and I take a motion to do that.
All right, I motion that we, that we move forward in development on RFP to select an architect firm for the development of restoring and remodeling the Akamak Primary School into a new school board office.
Second?
Just move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Opposed? Motion carries. That is. All right. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn to a closed meeting.
We will adjourn to a closed meeting as allowed by section 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia, subsection 8.1 Personnel, subsection 8.2 Student Matters, and Ace, and Sub.